First item on the agenda is 469-471 Maple Street, request for site plan review pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaw submitted by 469 Maple Street LLC for property in the Highway Corridor Zone, zoning district. The applicant proposes a new multifamily building with 13 residential units and associated site modifications. Accessors map 18 logs 30 and 31.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 469 Maple Street LLC. With me tonight is Jay Martel and Dan Corbett from the LLC. Also with me tonight is Bob Griffin, the project engineer. And as stated, we are looking for site plan approval for a new multifamily development at the combination of 469 and 471 Maple Street. The property is located in the Highway Corridor Zone. And this, this project involves, as I said, the combination of 469 and 471 Maple Street, on which there is currently a non-conforming three-family residential use on the property now. It's a three-family home. It was built about 1900, and it's not in, in good condition at all. It's rather in additional repair. And in July of last year, we went to the Preservation Commission, and the Preservation Commission determined that this building was not historically significant, which allowed us to proceed forward with the permitting process to remove that structure and build in its place a new multifamily development, which will replace the existing structure with a new multifamily building, which will house 13 residential units. There will be parking under the building as well as onsite parking. We did receive a finding from the Board of Appeals, and we also received setback variances from the front, side, and rear. As you'll see when Bob Griffin presents the plans, this is a perfectly triangular lot, which makes it challenging to, to place, and it's rather undersized as well, to make it meet the setback requirements that are applicable in the Highway Corridor Zone, which are typically for larger lots and bigger types of developments. So again, we're proposing 13 residential units. Each of the units is two-bedroom, and we have parking spaces, a total of 26 parking spaces are required, and we are providing 29 parking spaces. So we do have some additional spaces. There are 15 spaces under the building and 14 surface parking. So we have, as a result of this project, a net new units of 10, because as I said, this is an existing three-family on the site, and we're proposing 13 units. So we have a net new of 10 units. And we are in compliance, as required, with the affordable housing component. We will be providing one affordable unit, which would of course be a two-bedroom unit, because all of the units are two-bedroom, as well as a monetary contribution of $70,000, again, in accordance with Section 29 of the zoning bylaw. As a public contribution for this development, the developer is proposing to provide off-site on the abutting lot, which is owned by the Danvers Electric Division, some parking, gravel parking area. This is the area where the rail trail extension is going to be. So we thought that would be a good public amenity, if you will, to add to, to the site, or to the project, I should say. And we worked with the planning department. We also met with the Rail Trail Committee back in September of last year, and we received unanimous support from the committee for the creation of 12 parking spaces in a gravel parking lot. We would also, in conjunction with that, be providing an access easement over the, over the project to access those, those parking spaces. So the applicant is proposing to construct those parking spaces, the gravel parking lot, contemporaneously with the development of, of this project. We, let's see. We've met, obviously, in conjunction with that, we've met with planning staff as well as the Electric Division and DPW to come up with the location and, and general design of the gravel parking lot. You do have with this application package the full site plan set, including architectural plans and floor plans. We worked extensively with the Board of Appeals. It took us a few meetings to get through the Board of Appeals. We revised the architectural plans to provide a very residential appearance, building the initial building that we had presented to the Board of Appeals. The board felt was not as residential in design, and so we resolved that through the, through the renovations and the, to the plans and the building elevation plans and floor plans that were submitted with the application to you are the result of that. Was not as residential in design, and so we... Got that? You also have floor plans. You have a stormwater management report, as well as a parking and traffic summary. We've gone through two rounds of comments with the engineering department. First round was on February 26th, and Griffin Engineering responded to those comments completely, and you should have in your package a response from the engineering department dated March 8th, indicating that all issues have been addressed, and they are asking for a stormwater report relative to the gravel parking area, which we will provide and would certainly accept as a condition. So with that, I will turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Nancy, and good evening. If we could go back to the SC1 sheet first, just for a moment. So I just want to point out a couple things on the plan. As Nancy pointed out, it's pretty much a perfect triangle. It's about 110 feet on the eastern side, and then you've got two legs that are 409 feet and 395 feet of frontage. This gives us about one-half acre of land for the entire parcel, again, in a zone that requires one acre. So we're significantly undersized even after putting the two parcels together. The topography of the site is such that the highest point is the pointy end of it, well, the narrow point of the triangle is about elevation 112, and it drops down 14 feet from there to the northeast direction, so that the lowest elevation on the property is about elevation 98 feet. There's no wetlands on the property. There's a couple of boxes in the plan. Those are where we did some test pits a few months ago to characterize soil conditions. I'll talk about that more a little bit as we get going along, but I would just say good sandy soils, perfect for stormwater infiltration. The electric department obviously owns the adjacent parcel. The adjacent parcel is about one acre in size, and they've got some high, very tall, high voltage transmission lines on there. One tower there, and another tower there. There's also a SESD sewer easement that runs through the property. There was a sewer line constructed in the parcel in approximately 1977. It's 30 inches in diameter, so it's a good-sized sewer, and it's quite deep. It's about 23 feet at the eastern end and about 36 feet at the narrow point of the triangle. And we've had discussions with the SESD as we've been going along. We're obviously trying to make sure that we don't do anything to the easements or to their sewer line. We're going to have to raise up a sewer manhole, and we've spoken to them or transmitted plans to them about how we're going to go about doing that. We're going to reuse the building service that connects to that 30-inch sewer line as part of this work. Okay, so let's go to the next one, please. Again, pretty straightforward site layout. We've tried to, you know, respect the shape and work with the property as, as much as we can. In the process of the back and forth with the engineering department, the electric department, we've moved the parking lot for the town's bike path a little closer to the, to, to the point, again, the narrow point of the triangle, and that was to better situate the parking spaces. The electric light department wanted to have the parking spaces so that they were not directly underneath the high voltage wires, so that if, I suppose, ice in the winter or something else fell off the, the wires in the summertime, it wouldn't be landing on the cars directly. So that's where we, how we ended up with this particular alignment and why it might be a little different from some of the earlier plans you may have seen. We're also showing on this plan a 15-foot-wide easement. This is, this is to allow grading and access during construction, and we're showing an easement to provide access to the town property across the private property. So that would be for the, for the future bike path parking users. Front door of the building is here. We've got access around the sides here, and a lower level access out to the front here. We've got about... Where's my number? I think we've got about 400 or 500 feet of sidewalk that we're going to construct along the front, frontage of our property, connecting the doggy daycare here with our driveway. There's a, a public sidewalk on the opposite side of the street that connects to Leahy and back down towards the town fire station. Let's see. The building, again, this is about 110 feet wide and about 75 feet deep. Three stories of residential housing on top of one story of parking. Five two-bedroom units on the first floor, five two-bedroom units on the second floor, three up on the top floor. And so the, the building sort of narrows down in usable area as you get up to the top, and that's, again, because of this residential gables and the architectural detailing for that area. The overall height of the building is 47 feet in a zone that requires 55 feet. So we're well below the, the height requirements for the building. And again, it's a nice-looking residential-style building. Site impervious surfaces, we will be at 59% after construction of the building and the parking lot and the sidewalks and all that kind of stuff. That compares to a 70% maximum in this zone. So we're well below the impervious requirements in that regard. The other thing that the, and we'll go to the next page if we could, please. The other thing that the impervious triggers, of course, is a stormwater management system underneath the parking lot. Is a stormwater infiltration system. We're going to take essentially three-quarters of the roof runoff and pipe it into that infiltration system. We're going to have a couple of catch basins and a pre-treatment device to direct water into that infiltration basin as well. After the infiltration basin, if the capacity of the basin has exceeded... Oh, look at this. Thank you. Noise. I'm getting shorter every year. The discharge will come out to a location right here, so a level spreader discharging any excess water in the direction that it currently flows. We're also creating a fairly level area for the town bike path parking. So this area, it's a little hard to see the proposed grades, but basically, you know, 112, 111, 110 at that corner. So a very flat parking area. And this, the terrain in this area right now is somewhat depressed, so it sort of forms a bowl in that area. So there'll be as much as, okay, there'll be as much as 10 feet of fill placed to create the town parking area. So it's a significant amount of, of fill to, to bring in, but at the same time, it will end up marrying in with the adjacent grades, and it will, I think, serve a future bike path very well. It'll also have an easy grade in and out from Maple Street. So very flat slope across here. As we enter the property, we're going to drop down to our basement level parking, so we've got that eight feet of grade change from here down to the basement level here. We make up most of that in here, and then a little bit across the parking lot, across those nine or 10 spaces at the front there. But again, it's all, it's all paved, it's all curved, and all the stormwater's directed into our new stormwater management system. And again, pretty straightforward for this type of development. We did provide a stormwater management report to the engineering department, and I think they've, they're satisfied with that based on the most recent comments that we got back. So flipping onto the next sheet, just quickly touch on site utilities. There's a 20-inch water line here in Maple Street, so we're going to bring in a fire protection line and a potable water service line off of that to serve the building. Sewage goes out the back, again, into that 30-inch sewer line that the SESD owns. Our parking garage gets treated through an MDC trap that also discharges into the SESD sewer line. You can see on the plan. Here, here, we've got a couple of outdoor light fixtures. These are about 16 feet tall, downward casting, sort of shoebox-style light fixtures to minimize any casting of light onto adjacent properties or towards the roadways. We also provided a photometric plan, which is the next sheet, which it's just got a bunch of numbers on it, but basically it shows us that. We've got, you know, light in the parking lot here, which is where you would want it to be. There's a couple of light fixtures on the wall of the building as well. But by the time we get to the perimeter of the site, we're at zero-foot candles, so we're not casting light onto adjacent properties, as you might expect. And next, what's the lighting plan? The landscaping plan. So the landscaping plan was prepared by Laura Rutledge, our registered landscape architect. She, one of the nice things about this site is that we have a pretty significant distance from the granite edging in Maple Street to our property line, and so it looks like we have more grass or more room for landscaping in front of our building than we probably really do. So we're going to be filling in that tree belt with nine trees. We're also going to be placing some trees close to the, close to the building. The trees in the tree belt are going to be Hawthorn, Redbud, and I think we had a couple of, oh, a couple of ironwoods, or also known as a hornbeam, here and here in front of the building. On the property itself, closer to the building, we've got some Crimson Point cherry trees, which are sort of narrow and upright, a number of perennials and shrubs around the front of the building as well. There's an arborvitae hedge along the doggy daycare side, and there's also a few trees, some maples, and I think there's pin oak right there at the far end. So I think it's a very well-thought-out landscaping plan, and I think it's going to beautify this section of Maple Street quite a bit. And with that, I'd be happy to begin addressing any questions. Oh, okay. Yeah, they're, we didn't, I don't know if they're in our set. They're in that February 1st. Right, right. I can bring it up in a moment. So here's our second floor and third floor, third floor plan. Our first floor plan is very similar to the second floor plan, but you can see we've got five two-bedroom units on the second floor and three two-bedroom units on the third floor. We lose a little bit of the building space here and there and over on these corners, and that's because of the gables dropping down and limiting the available living space, basically. If we go to the next sheet, I think we have some elevations. So this is our, this is our front elevation here, and again, you can see, you know, the number of sort of dormers and these gables all sort of making a nice residential appeal to the building. The air, the area in front of here is landscaped. The first floor is up a couple of feet from the grade, and that was necessary to allow us to make the basement parking level work and have a reasonable slope from the basement level out to the street. Here's the garage door. We have recycling and trash rooms on each side there. But again, pretty, pretty straightforward, nice colors, I think, and certainly a lot of the six-over-one windows give it a nice residential feel as well. The next sheet, please. So I think this is the back of the building, and here's the side. You can see the stair wells coming out from our emergency access here, the stair tower on that side of the building, access up to this, up to the street through the staircase. And again, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them at this time.
All right. Questions from the board. Tori?
Question for staff. On the publicly available maps, this combination of two lots looks like it is split between highway corridor and residential zoning, and that is contradicted by documentation with those maps. But I just want to clarify for the record, this is highway corridor, correct?
Yes, both, both, both lots are highway corridor.
I don't have any questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Lou, questions?
Sure, yeah, just some questions. I guess there's a question for the applicant with respect to just parking in terms of layout. So it's, so I'm a little confused just in terms of the number of parking spaces. So I thought I saw in some areas of the package that it's two spots per unit, and so, but is, are there 28 total spaces or 29?
29 total spaces, and we have three extra as compared to the zoning requirement.
Okay, so three extra, okay.
Right.
Gotcha. And in terms of the, sort of how they're going to be provided, I understand that there's going to be an underground component as well as a outside parking area.
Yeah.
In terms of how the units are, and I'm not sure, is this going to be ownership units or rental units?
Condominium units. And so we would probably have at least one parking space assigned to each unit. There's 15 spaces underneath the building and there'll be 13 units.
I see, okay.
And you've got two handicap spaces underneath the building as well. So that sort of works out very well that each unit would get at least one space undercover.
Okay, that was what I was wondering. So each unit would get an undercover spot, so it wouldn't be something that they would have to pay extra for or something like that. So therefore people may just park all outside instead.
I don't know what the financial arrangements are going to be necessarily, but they would have the opportunity to put one car underneath the cover.
Okay, gotcha. And in terms of the, in terms of also the parking as well, I understand that the, that the, for the, with respect to the public area, there'll be 12 spaces.
That's correct.
Provided. And I do see from the, from the, you know, from the decision from the zoning board of appeals that it's, that residents will not be using the, are not to use those public spaces.
That's right.
I guess the question is, is in terms of, in terms of visitors, is that something? I know that there are, there are going to be three additional spots. Is that sufficient for visitors to the units? And would, you know, just in terms of how things generally work, or would, or will people find themselves, visitors parking in the rail trail spots?
Yeah, it's our intention not to have people parking in the rail trails parking spot. And I think, you know, two spaces per unit is really pretty generous for this, for a two-bedroom condominium. We probably will end up parking, you know, somewhere around one and a half spaces per unit.
Sure.
And so I think there'll be ample excess parking spaces available.
Okay, got it. And there will be signage, I would, I assume as well?
I think that was part of the draft recommendations, that we cooperate with the town regarding signage for the, particularly as it relates to parking in that bike path parking area.
Okay. With respect to the, sort of the architectural, I do notice, I mean, the design looks very, looks like a nice design in terms of residential design. I like the six-over-one windows. And in terms of the, in terms of like the paint color scheme, is that going to be, it looks like, I can see like a yellow and a gray. Is that what we're potentially looking at? I know you-
Yeah, I'm the wrong guy in the colors. I happen to be colorblind, so, but I'll let you guys decide what your color you think it is.
It seems to me like it's yellow and a gray. And that would be representative of what it would be in real life?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It has not been finalized.
Has not been finalized, but it would be consistent with a residential color scheme versus something odd.
Crazy?
Yes.
We've got to sell these units.
Okay. And also I did notice as well that there's a reference to, I think, composite wood siding. What exactly, is that a hardy plank or something?
Yes.
It is, as opposed to a vinyl?
Right.
Okay. I think that's, and I guess this one last thing is in terms of the, I know you were before the zoning board of appeals and were there any, and they obviously, that it was, you know, that they did approve it as it's currently before us, was there any, any comments or anything that we should be aware of in terms of what, of anything that transpired there? Any other concerns or anything of that nature?
No, I actually thought the hearings went pretty well. I think that, you know, obviously there was some pretty significant architectural changes and then a number of units dropped and all that.
Sure.
But I think it was a very productive process.
Okay. Sounds good. I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Gene, any questions?
So the garage entry, is that just going to be open to get into the low-grade parking?
I believe that he's showing a door at that location now. And I know that when the, when we designed these enclosed parking garages, sometimes it actually costs less to have a garage from the heating and ventilating requirements versus having it open and allowing the freezing conditions that can otherwise develop in that area. So I don't know that it, if that detail has been quite finalized, but I think it's more likely than not to have a garage door.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Sam, questions?
No questions.
Mike?
The parking lot for the rail trail says phase two. Is it being done at the same time or is it being done at a later date?
So when we first submitted our application, we were looking at a phased project and so that was the reason that that showed up on the original drawings. Most recently, I think it's, we've taken off the phasing so that it all happens at once, again, subject to town approval, but-
And then I know, I'm assuming it's okay that there's not lighting over there because it's probably going to be used mainly in the day, but has there been any thought into having any sort of lighting around the parking for that rail trail area?
Yeah, there really hasn't been any request from the town to put lighting in that area. We did position a lights, a light fixture at that, where it goes into that area. So I think that'll, that'll cast some light into that parking area.
Okay, I think so too. And the last thing I have is just, you talked about parking spot quantities and you said it was 29. Two of them are handicaps, so you're at 27, and then two are guests, you're at 25. So is it actually one of the units will only have one spot then technically?
No, the handicap spaces are considered parking spaces, so you don't-
Right, but you can't park in that if you're not a handicap resident.
Well, with, I'm done.
Right, so I guess that's my question. Are those, are they going to end up parking the guest spot and then you only have one guest spot?
Oh.
And is that a concern to anybody or not?
I don't think it's a concern. The zoning bylaw does not require guest spaces at all.
Yeah.
So we have two spaces per unit. So that's 26 spaces. And then we just happen to provide three extra, which is always nice to have them, but the bylaw doesn't require it because the two spaces for each unit accounts for, as Bob said before, having guests because everybody won't have two cars who live there. So a handicapped resident would certainly be entitled to a handicap parking space. If there is only one handicapped resident and one, then we would have one extra handicap parking space. And a guest who might come who is handicapped could park there. But you are absolutely right, a non-placard individual can't park in a handicap space.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I just had questions on, just where does the rail trail coincide? Where are you picking that up?
This is the area, this land that's owned by the electric department has been laid out as the next extension of the rail trail. So it's not constructed yet, but this is where it would go from basically, is it the North Street area down and then into Middleton? What's that? Spring Street.
So you come down Spring Street-
Sorry, not North Street. Spring Street.
And you jump on 62 West?
That's right.
And where do you cross over to get to? How do you cross over those lanes of traffic to get here?
I do not know.
So if I could, if I could comment, so-
Kind of an easy way.
Currently, currently the town is in conversations with, I think, our consultant, I believe it's VHB. I think we're at the point where we're discussing a couple alternative, alternative routes or design options. And I believe that all three of them are what you would call an off, off-street path or off-street trail. None of them would be, you know, like on 62, but it would be, the right-of-way of 62 is wide enough where it would be, there would be space between, you know, the trail and then, you know, Route 62, the street. So there's several different kind of iterations or versions or design alternatives that, and so that's kind of where we're at. They all sort of, all three of them are sort of close to this vicinity of this, you know, parking, parking lot. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so if you're, if you're parking your car, you're going to take your bike out, get onto Maple Street and head toward the signalized light maybe?
No, it's not, the path's not on Maple Street. It's a little bit off of it. And so if you were leaving this trail, if you went left here or west, you'd go to middle, you'd go to Middleton. And then if you went to the right or east, you would, you know, go, go towards town or like go under, you'd go under the, under those two overpasses there, you'd go underneath it.
You would be on 62 though.
But it would- It's parallel, like to 62 on the rail trail website?
Yeah.
Is that what it's proposing?
It's not on the street and it's not like a bike path on 62, but it just, it, it's off the road a little bit. There's just, it gets tight in different spa, in different places along this kind of two-mile stretch, you know, it kind of, the width of the right-of-way narrows and sometimes it goes closer to 62 and then sometimes that, you know, it goes further away from it.
Okay.
Yep.
Where's the, the cross, is there a crosswalk there? So I'm just wondering how people would-
There are-
Where's the nearest crosswalk, other than the one up at the light? Is there one here where you're going to have a lot?
You wouldn't have to, there would, you wouldn't have to do a crosswalk to get to the trail from this parking lot as it's currently sort of proposed. This like green area is sort of, is this area to the left, I guess where my cursor is, is owned by the town, the electric division. And then this other portion is a right-of-way that's either owned by the town or the state. But, and we're just trying to figure out like the best kind of location for the future trail. But this is the, I believe that this is the most, this is, this will be the, the extension of the trail that's most, that will come up soonest or like in the next couple of years, probably less than two years, but don't harm me to that.
Is there a crosswalk associated with this development in the sidewalks that you're putting out in front? I mean, for people to get off the island here, if you will, to the other side of the street or?
We're not proposing one.
So I guess the nearest one is up by the intersection of the light?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you able to walk or go that way by sidewalk?
It does not appear that way.
Does the sidewalk just end at the building?
It looks like it just appears, end at that, at the driveway, I believe, where my cursor is.
And Josh, I don't know, but looking at the rail trail on the website, it then continues af, it hops over Maple Street and then continues on the other side. So if you were to park in that lot, you could either get on the rail trail or you'd be walking across Maple Street to the rail trail. Is that correct?
The idea, I think when we preliminary discussed it, was there would be some sort of, we don't know the exact location, but if you could see my cursor, the trail is probably going to be somewhere in this kind of area. So there would be, the idea would be that we would, at some point, there'd be a small connection from this trail, kind of like this, like a, just like a small, like, you know, four, five, eight-foot wide path wherever the trail ends up being ultimately located just to connect it to the park.
So that people wouldn't be walking across Maple Street?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. No, across the Maple Street itself of the building? Because the rail trail's going to jump across-
Let me see if I-
-Maple Street. Not this part of Maple Street.
The aerial helpful? We have an aerial here, which might be helpful.
Yeah, the aerial might, I could bring it up too, maybe. That's what I was trying to show. But if Bob wanted to talk for a minute about it, well, I'd bring it up if it's easier.
Well, one, I agree with Josh that this is the logical location for the rail trail along the sort of just the side of power lines, power lines and Route 62. If the, you know, once it's connect, once it's constructed, there will be a crossing so that bikes can cross over this portion of Maple Street as you're on their way to Middleton. So there would be something sort of done here.
Yeah.
But right now, we're not proposing some way of getting from the island, as you phrase it, to the opposite side of Old Maple Street. I suppose, you know, right now you can, there's a sidewalk along this side of Perk Ride and there's a sidewalk that runs along Old Maple Street, runs all the way down to the fire station.
Okay, right there, Josh.
And sidewalks that go lateral down Route 1 as well. But I think, you know, the future use of this area is a parking lot here, getting directly onto the bike path, probably crossing Maple Street as the bike path is-
Yeah, I mean, it just seems that you'll need, the town will have to put a sidewalk, continue to sidewalk beyond the driveway. But as you know, people drive quite fast coming off that ramp for Route 1, going by subpoenas, and then heading the other way toward Route 1 to jump on. So if you're adding another 26 to 30 people and you're adding a lot of, you know, potentially people using that lot for parking for the rail trail, we just want to make sure they can get out. And I'm not, I'm not imposing that burden on you to extend the sidewalk down. I'm just wondering how it's all going to come together.
Jim, if you'll, let's interrupt. If you'll see up here in the aerial, this is sort of, you know, the building, new building, proposed building is sort of in this general vicinity-ish. And so the trail, the, the potential trail is something like this, you know, it would go to the intersection, I think is what you're talking about. There's discussions ultimately about how to best, you know, do the, do the trail crossing if it's here or if it's here. You know, just one of those things that you need to figure out, you know, those crossings you could do with it, deal with it in different ways. So with the building right here, the parking lot sort of, and Bob corrected me if I'm wrong, the rail trail parking lot somewhere in this general vicinity-ish, it's going to be pretty close. So folks will be able to access the, from this proposed rail trail parking lot, accessing the trail itself before getting to this ultimate crossing and where that crossing would be. It's sort of like a, it's a safe landing.
So at some point, the rail trail crosses the street?
Yes.
From Spring Street, if you will, or-
That's right. Maple Street, and then it goes to Middleton that way and then goes this way.
Where do you cross over at Nichols or Spring Street?
That's probably one of the more, so down here, I mean, we're sort of getting away a little bit, but-
Yeah, because they're on the-
But there, there's several different kind of iterations and design, because right now the trail ends right here.
Yep.
This piece is something that we're internally trying to figure out the best way to do it. You know, do we cross Nichols here and do it, keep it, this is, or do we put it over here? So that's what I mean, the different alternatives. And I don't know if I'm saying things I shouldn't say in public, but-
Yeah, I was just wondering how you're going to do it.
Yeah, there's three different, yeah, there's, that's what I mean when I was saying-
You have to get across.
There's three design options that we're working through. And this, this side is the harder piece that we're trying to figure out. And then yes, the trail will then go underneath these two under, overpasses, keep going this way towards the project that we're talking about tonight. So, yeah.
Okay, well, I think it, the building's a very attractive building. I think it is a good use of the site and I think it, you know, with the parking, it's got adequate parking. So I don't really have any questions on the plans itself. I think Lou has a follow-up question.
Yeah, just a, just a quick follow-up question. And this might be more for staff. I was looking at the, the engineering second comments.
Mm-hmm.
I guess this was one that was, I guess dated March the 8th. And I just had a question. I was, I was going through, and this is at page, the bottom of page three, dealing with snow storage.
Okay.
And I was just a little bit confused because typically, looking at it, they go through each point by point and then say, no further comment from engineering.
Mm-hmm.
But then I see two, both number seven and number 15. One deals with snow storage, one deals with elevation for water service, and then I see no further comment from engineering as to both. I assume that that's related to both-
Okay.
-comments with respect to snow storage as well as the, so, you know what I'm saying? Because typically it's-
Yep.
The engineering responds to each one and then there are two, then there's only one engineer second comment.
Yeah, I can't speak to, oh, it looks like-
I think a page got-
Yeah.
-missed from the, from the PDF.
Is that it?
But I think we, you know, everything was, you know, we're basically satisfied-
Okay.
-with the, with the exception of the future stormwater analysis associated with the gravel parking lot.
Okay.
And just to satisfy your issues or concerns, Lou, there's a condition that everything in here has to be satisfied in the decision, so.
I guess what I want to make sure, engineering covered everything, so there's, so each, each point, engineering covered.
It looks that way.
Because it does appear that what we received was, was a, there seemed like there was a scanning, we missed a page on scanning.
Yes.
So page four of the, of the March-
Right, because it looks like eight through 14 is missing, it looks like. And then-
I have our March 4th response, which is what the engineering department was evaluating.
Yep.
You know, number seven had to do with the dimensions of- You know, number s, uh, seven had to do with the dimensions of the building. Number eight had to do with the dimensions of the level spreader. Nine was snow storage areas, and we have three snow storage areas on the site. Ten was some, uh, comments about cutting and capping existing gas and water utilities at the main. Eleven was, uh, a detail regarding electrical conduits. Twelve was, uh, another comment regarding electrical conduits in the transformer location. Thirteen was a cleanout detail. And fourteen was a note regarding water and sewer main testing and chlorination. Also all pretty dry stuff, but I think we did respond to the town's comments and I, I don't recall any remaining concerns.
And with, on engineering, this for staff was for engineering then? Were there any further comments for points, I guess, number seven through fourteen?
There were none.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any further questions from the board? Hearing none, this is a public meeting. Any questions or comments from the audience? If you would, use the microphone and identify yourself.
Bill Brandt Street, Tommy Member Precinct One. Don't hold me to it, but I believe I've heard more than once the state was going to assist, pay for whatever for the rail trail crossing. I'm not sure how it's supposed to be done. All I heard was that the state offered to pay for it. So that if that assists the development with one of your questions, again, don't hold me to it, but that's what I ever.
Thank you. Further questions, comments?
David Craig, three seventy Maple Street. First of all, apologies for being late. I was on, on teams, but I did get here in time to speak. This actually, I spoke at both of the ZBA meetings on this as well. I think this is a great project, very good use of an otherwise useless piece of land, uh, vast improvement from what's currently there. And speaking to the rail trail, the section from Nichols over by Forest Street all the way to, I believe it's pretty much to this, where, um, where Maple Street comes out and rejoins sixty-two is under the purview of the state, that, that segment. The rest of it's being handled by the town, is my understanding. And the most difficult part of that is actually gonna be the crossing in the vicinity of Nichols Street, right down the street from my house, cause that's a very busy intersection. Actually, when I was about eight or nine years old, I used to cross there to go to get my baseball cards at Chris's convenience store. I don't think, I don't like crossing it now and I certainly wouldn't send a nine-year-old across it. But I, I'd be interested to see what the state comes up with for solving that particular issue. But I look forward to the, the rest of the trail being developed, though. It's, it's really gonna be a, a big asset for the town to extend it, you know, in the east-west direction. But fundamentally, I, I like this project a lot and I'm very much in favor of it.
Thank you. Other questions from the audience? Attorney McCann?
I just have one, um, comment and a request. I believe on the most recent plan set, it's, the plans show a proposed stockade fence behind the very dense row of Arborvitae adjacent to the Doggy Daycare that I think has a fence. So what we would like to do, if it's amenable to the board, is remove that proposed stockade fence and leave in the Arborvitae hedge, but it seems a bit belts and suspenders to have the thick Arborvitae fence and then another fence and then the Doggy Daycare fence. So it would be our request, that didn't make its way into the, the revised plan set. So we would like to remove that proposed stockade fence.
Any questions from the board on that?
Where is that again?
It's to the right of the proposed building.
Which plan, Bob or Nancy, does it probably show that best? C two.
It was on one of the sheets that you were.
It actually shows up on sheet C six, which is the landscaping plan. We took it off of site plan, but I think we failed to take it off of the landscaping plan. That's what happened there.
Okay, good. So I, I noticed it when Bob was, was talking. Proposed stockade here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So there's an existing fence there now, correct? Is that what?
Uh, no, I don't know whether there is. I'm sure the Doggy Daycare has a fence.
Well, there's, there's a fence.
I would hope. But we were proposing a fence, but then also the Arborvitae in it, that just seems unnecessary. And Bob took it off of the other sheets, but when he was presenting, I saw it was still on that one. So I just wanted to be clear, we don't wanna propose that stockade fence because it is not necessary and it looks like it's along the, what would you say, southerly lot line?
Everyone all right with that on the board?
It doesn't need to be one of the decisions on that.
Okay. Any further questions from the audience? Hearing none. For the discussion from the board. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, none. Decision, uh, if you could read that, Lou?
Yes. And I don't think we need to make, do we need, do we need to make a reference to the, the fence in the decision?
We can add a sentence.
I can add a sentence, okay. Got it, will do. Okay, Town of Danvers Planning Board, Site Plan Review, four sixty-nine to four seventy-one Maple Street. Date of application, February first, twenty twenty-four. Date of hearing, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Date of decision, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The Danvers Planning Board finds the site plan submitted by four sixty-nine Maple Street LLC for property at four sixty-nine to four seventy-one Maple Street, assessors map eighteen, lots thirty and thirty-one, to be in substantial compliance with the criteria and regulations adopted by the town. Details of the plan review can be found on the following plans. Site plans for multifamily residents, four sixty-nine and four seventy-one Maple Street, Danvers, Mass. Prepared by Griffin Engineering Group LLC, dated February first, twenty twenty-four. Revised to March fourth, twenty twenty-four, consisting of eleven sheets. The following submission requirements have been waived. One, section four point three point one, title sheet. The existing dwellings and easements are shown on the site analysis plan, C one. Two, section four point three point three, dimensional regulations plan. Dimensional regulations plan prepared by registered professional engineer instead of registered land surveyor. Three, section four point three point four, site construction plan. The proposed location and dimension of drives, parking area and curb cuts is shown on the dimensional regulations ties plan, C three. A table indicating amounts of earth material that are to be removed, added or reused on site in cubic feet is not shown. Four, section four point three point six, utilities plan. The profile of the utilities to be constructed on site is not shown on the plan. Five, section four point three point seven, landscape plan. The landscape plan is not prepared by a registered landscape architect submitted. The yard setbacks and table showing the percentage of existing and proposed of impervious surface is shown on the site layout and grading drainage and utilities plan, C three. Sex, section four point three point eight, off-street parking and loading plan. The off-street and loading plan is entitled the dimensional regulations plan, C two. The construction details and type of materials for surface paving is shown on the construction details, one, C seven. Administrative, the project is subject to the following conditions. One, prior to certificate of occupancy of the thirteenth unit, the rail trail parking lot shall be complete to the satisfaction of the town unless the Danvers Engineering Division or Electric Division has requested or caused delay in the parking lot construction, in which case the applicant and planning staff will determine appropriate security for completion of the parking lot. Two, prior to certificate of occupancy of the thirteenth unit, the proposed town access easement related to the rail trail parking lot shall be shown on a plan and once accepted by the town, the documentation associated with the access easement shall be filed at the registry of deeds. Three, prior to certificate of occupancy of the seventh unit, the applicant and/or developer shall provide an affordable housing unit and/or an affordable housing payment slash contribution based on the number of net new residential units pursuant to section twenty-nine affordable housing provision of the zoning bylaw. Four, residents of the new multifamily building are prohibited from parking in the rail trail parking lot. Five, the applicant will work with the town regarding directional signage related to the rail trail parking lot. Six, the applicant agrees to satisfy all the comments in the engineering division memorandum dated March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Seven, if there are any changes to the approved plans, the use or the conditions on premises, planning staff will review. If deemed a major change by staff, the applicant will have to apply for a new application for site plan review. And it is also noted that the proposed stockade fence shown on C six will not be, um, will not be included. Uh, will not be provided, rather. This project is subject to the attached list of general conditions. Any approval of this site plan review shall lapse within three years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date. James Sears, Chair.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a clarification on condition number two?
Sure.
My concern is that, uh, we have, this is a prior to the certificate of occupancy for the thirteenth unit, that the proposed town access easement shall be shown on a plan. And I had, um, mentioned to Josh, uh, language that would say we would provide acceptable documentation to the town. What we don't wanna see is there be some sort of a holdup on the town accepting the easement and thereby causing the certificate of occupancy to be held up even though we've provided the documentation that is in accept, is in acceptable form and the plan is in acceptable form, but then there's a process for the town to accept the easement. We don't wanna be caught in that. So I had suggested that if we could have this condition worded such that we would provide an, a plan that's acceptable and the easement in an acceptable form, um, that we need to do that as opposed to the acceptance of that by the town, because I don't know how long that might take.
So.
Josh.
So, yeah, Brian, um, Brian and I spoke this afternoon about this condition. This was the language that we sort of feel comfortable with. Because it's something that the town would be receiving, um, it wouldn't have, the documentation and plans wouldn't have to go to town meeting. They could simply be submitted and accepted to a select board meeting at, from the select board. So since, you know, they meet pretty frequently, we didn't feel that that was, um, you know, that shouldn't hold up the process. So that's why the language that's proposed is what was included in the decision.
Anything further?
Could you read that condition one more time?
Two, prior, prior to certificate of occupancy, CO of the thirteenth unit, the proposed town access easement related to the rail trail parking lot shall be shown on a plan and once accepted by the town, comma, the documentation associated with the access easement shall be filed at the registry of deeds.
I think we just, we just still have a concern because of, uh, we've got condition number one, which is fine. And then if we could have the prior to the certificate of occupancy of the thirteenth unit, the proposed town access easement related to the rail trail shall be shown on a plan and acceptable documentation provided, period. So that that's our requirement. We have to submit an acceptable plan and the acceptable documentation, period. Then a knock, the next sentence, once accepted by the town, the documentation shall be recorded at the registry. But the condition relative to, um, the certificate of occupancy should be geared toward the providing an acceptable plan and providing, um, the documentation. It's the, my concern is tying the certificate of occupancy to, um, once accepted by the town. And I'll give you an example. The issue I have is very often the selectmen do not meet in the summer. They might take the entire month of July off. Sometimes they take more than that. So we could get caught up where we're ready for a CO at the end of June and the documents can't be accepted. So if we can have a provision where the CO is held up based on providing the plan, no problem. Providing acceptable documentation, which we can work out with town council and with planning staff. That's what we have to do, period. And then once it's accepted by the town, it gets recorded. But the certificate of occupancy relates to providing the plan and providing the, uh, documentation, because that's what we can control. We can't control the acceptance.
Is the plan right there showing the easement? All you need is the easement language. Couldn't you do that tomorrow?
Well, the easement has to, it's typically built and then you give the easement with, that's not an easement plan. But yes, you could turn around an easement plan pretty quickly.
That's your reason, it's right there.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
You could give them the language tomorrow. Not June. I, I, I'm just saying. There's no, I'm not trying to minimize it, but you could give them the easement language tomorrow. It's not gonna hold something up. You're not gonna have your thirteenth unit ready in June.
You'd be amazed at how quickly they can build.
You did. I'd wanna know who the builder is, but that'd be tremendous. If you could, but I think you could give them the language tomorrow. It's not gonna take.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm saying, we'll give the plan, we'll give the language. My problem is tying the certificate of occupancy up. When we have, when we have fully, but we have fully, we have fully performed.
That's the leverage.
That's the issue.
That's the town's leverage.
What do you mean? But I've done what we can do, which is to provide the plan.
You can do what you need to do tomorrow. There's no holdup between now and the thirteenth unit. There's nothing holding you up to do the access easement language. You have a plan.
Oh.
You're showing it on a plan.
Yeah, I think you're misunderstanding me. I am not, um, asking for there to be any delay in our providing the plan or our providing the language. We will have to do that one hundred percent prior to the certificate of occupancy. Period. And then the town can accept it when they wanna accept it.
I'm just saying, what is the holdup for doing it now rather than waiting three months to do it? Showing an easement on a plan and having easement language.
It can be, it can be done sooner, but it also could be held up in the acceptance process. And if we have constructed, because it says under item number one that we have to construct it and item number two is we have to provide the plan and we have to provide the documentation, absolutely gotta do all that before the certificate of occupancy. That's where our obligation relative to the CO should end because we don't have control over the acceptance step. So if we have performed everything we need to do, we should be able to get our CO. That's my, that's my request. And I think it can be done by inserting a period in here somewhere, um, on that language so that, um, and delete the acceptance language. So we have to provide the plan, we gotta provide the documentation, all that's acceptable to the town. It's gotta be in an acceptable form, that's all part of it. And then we can get our CO. And if the town select board has a busy agenda and they don't get to it for three months, that doesn't hold us up.
What do you say, Josh, on that?
I don't know if the acceptance is like, kinda like what you were saying, I don't know. Seems like there's a plan that's pretty close to finalization, there's language. Seems like there's a plan that's pretty close to finalization, there's language that could probably put together fairly quickly, and then you would just have to, you know, be added, be added to a select board meeting, and they meet twice a month, so I, I don't know. And I think that's something that could be done, you know, not even close to when the building is complete or ready to be moved in, so I just, I'm not sure if I'm seeing the issue. I could understand if the select board didn't meet very often or, you know, other kind of exterminating circumstances, and I understand, you know, you don't want to be tied to something that you can't really, you know, time and control, but...
Right.
Do you wish to extend to our next meeting, to get this railway between town staff or town council? We can, you know...
Not particularly.
Well, I'm not sure that the board is comfortable, speaking for myself, if the town is not comfortable, town staff, if that's, because Josh has mentioned that he already discussed this with Brian, and that's what they came up with for the language. I don't know if the board is willing to change the language of this decision without further input from town staff, at least I'm not comfortable. Because the staff is the, the staff and the...
We're good.
Yeah, that's their job.
We'll take the condition as it's been drafted.
All right. So going back to, we have a motion that was made, and did you second it, Tori?
I'll second.
Tori seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, none.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good luck. Good luck. Next on the adjutant agenda, I think we just have meeting minutes. Do we have a motion on that? Lou?
Yes, maybe a moment. Yeah, I move to, I move to accept the minutes of the planning board meeting from January 23rd, 2024, as written.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, none. All right, any further with the staff?
Just, it's looking like the, our next regular scheduled meeting will probably be canceled, the second March meeting, but we will very likely have some, several items on both of our April meetings, so there will be, I'm expecting several applications in the next week or so, so...
Okay.
Our meetings in April will probably, a little bit, will be busier.
Anything further from the board? All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You seconded that, Tori? We don't want to get here. We don't have to come back for a meeting tomorrow.
I seconded the motion to adjourn.
Too soon, Jim.